It's a clock. We'll go ahead and now, one, call to order and welcome guests. Two, call of road to establish accord.
Chairman Clemmons.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
Commissioner Duke.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Number three, indication will be done by our council. So much thank you coming by.
Everyone, look just by your heads. Lord, we thank you for today, and God, we thank you for this honor of being able to stand here today. God, before any titles, before anything else, God, there are people in this room that we are your creation. So Father, I pray for each one here that's represented. I pray that you would give us the strength, God, as citizens of your kingdom, to represent you well. But God, as citizens of this community, I pray that we would represent you well in everything we say, everything we do, and in the way that we lead in our different ways in this community. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Number four, the prayers of the ladies will be done by County Attorney Brad Whits.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Five, approve the minutes of February 20th, '25 meeting. February 24th, '25 special call meeting. And March 14th, 2025 emergency meeting. Appropriations, spending tiers, personal actions, payroll, requisitions, and approve all journal entries to be posted.
Motion approved out of bid. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Six, public comments and updates. We don't have any. Move on to new business. Number seven. A, recognition Tommy Shackles retiring after 12 years with the Water Department.
Make a motion to approve out of A.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? B, proclamation child abuse and neglect awareness month.
Whereas Coleman County applauds Coleman Caring for Kids for their dedicated work in the prevention of child abuse and neglect in our community. And whereas Coleman County commends Coleman Caring for Kids for their tireless promotion of ongoing programs in our community which are designed to help prevent child abuse. And whereas the Coleman County Commission stands firmly on the side of prevention of any type of abuse and believes no child should endure verbal, emotional, or physical abuse for any reason. And whereas the National Exchange Club adopted the prevention of child abuse as its national project in 1979 in response to a request by its national president who, as a physician, noticed an increase in abuse cases in his medical practice. Since then, April has been designated as Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness Month, and Coleman County supports and encourages all of our residents and community leaders to wear blue each Monday in April in observance of Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness Month. Whereas the Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the month of April to be Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness Month. Our commitment is to have healthy, happy children and to help eradicate child abuse and neglect in our community and to support the efforts of Coleman Caring for Kids and all others who observe the importance of bringing awareness of this tragic problem and to help make our community a stronger and more loving county where children will be able to grow and thrive without fear or harm.
Motion approved out of B.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? C, resolution 25-24 change the speed limit to 30 on County Road 617.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duke, this is in your district. This is kind of low for a road this size, but this road's got a lot going on. It's about three miles long. It runs from Hopewell Road to County Road 601. It's got 66 driveways on it in that distance, so that's quite a few. It's the road with the tunnel on it. It's got seven or eight intersecting roads on it, so it's got a lot going on. That's the reason for the lower speed limit that we're putting, so we would recommend that it be 30 mile per hour.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of C.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed or passed? D, authorize payment to Everbridge in the amount of $20,548.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of D.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? E, consider termination of local emergency.
Make a motion to approve out of E.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? F, authorize the Revenue Commission to sign agreement with SRI Incorporated for tax sales, internet auction services.
Motion approved out of H.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed or passed? G, authorize the Revenue Commission to sign agreement with AutoLeget Data Solutions LLC for the hosting and maintenance of real estate tax process and software.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of G.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? H, consider Commissioner Duke's nominee pound nailed to the Coleman County 310 Board for a six-year term to expire 4/1/2031.
Make a motion to approve out of H.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? I consider Commissioner Freeman's nominee Mary Dean Lamar to the Coleman County 310 Board for a six-year term to expire 4/1/2031.
Motion approved out of I.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? J, consider annual spring cleanup for Free Dump Day during the month of May.
Motion approved out of J.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? K, consider approval of lease between the Coleman County Commission and the Coleman County Board of Education and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Is it not going to table that?
Yeah, we're going to table it.
Motion to table. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? L, consider extending the lease with the Coleman County Co-op for a 30-month lease on the Bates Building.
Make a motion to approve out of L.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? M, consider approval of contract between the Coleman County Commission and All Events Promotions LLC and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Motion approved out of M.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? N, consider approving engineering services contract pending any requested changes by ALDOT or FAA for general aviation apron reconstruction projects at the Coleman Regional Airport and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
How you doing, buddy?
I'm great. How about yourself?
Good, good.
Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having me. This is the approval for the next project for us, which is the reconstruction of the apron. So what we're trying to do, get approval on these contracts, then that will go out to bid. Once that's bid, then I'll come back to you guys and let you know that it is out for bid and we're ready to start production, I'm sorry, destruction on this.
No cost.
Right now, I'm not asking for money, but at the next meeting, that'll be different. This is three meetings in a row with no money, so just point that out.
Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to approve out of M. When you make a 12, we'll be in you. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? O, consider approving engineering services contract pending any requested changes by ALDOT or FAA for Midfield Development Construction Project at the Coleman Regional Airport and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is another project that will bid at the exact same time. This is the taxi lane. It will open up a 20-acre parcel for development. So again, we're trying to get these contracts in place and get all this ready. So once the bids come back, we're ready to start with production. I'm sorry, I say production, construction.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of O.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much, man. Thank you.
Bye, suburb.
P, consider the purchase of a 60-horsepower Kubota MX-6000 HST tractor for the Ag Center in the amount of $34,142.46.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of P.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Q, consider quote from Alexander Seal Coating and Striping Incorporated for the restryte of the existing boat ramp parking stalls at Smith Lake Park in the amount of $27,083 to be reimbursed from Alabama Game and Fish.
Make a motion to approve out of Q.
Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? R, consider the surplus of the following items from the garage to be optioned on Gov. deals or by any means necessary. One 1999 Caterpillar Sheep's Foot Rover, serial number 5JN00702. And then one Dresser Rover, serial number 170295-89 Delta 278.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of R.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? A, consider the surplus of a 1988 Corning Crane, serial number 140358, from the Road Department to be optioned on Gov. deals or by any means necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of S.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? T, extend bid number 1456 for herbicides for one year to Red River Specialist.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? U, award bid number 1478 to Guard Rails of Alabama Guard Rail Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of U.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? V, award bid number 1479 for polypropylene pipe to bagger concrete products incorporated to ADCO pipe and supply depending on availability and vicinity.
Chairman, make a motion to approve out of D.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Award bid number 1480 to bid Trumulus Plant Mix Furnished and Stowed to Wiregrass Construction and Grayson Carter &amp; Son Construction depending on availability and vicinity.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of D.
Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? X, award bid number 1488 for bid Trumulus Plant Mix product only to Wiregrass Construction and Grayson Carter &amp; Son Construction depending on availability and vicinity.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of X.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Y, award bid number 1482 for fireworks to pile road shows of Alabama Incorporated.
Make a motion to approve out of Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Z, award bid number 1483 to Pepsi for parks located at Smith Lake, Sportsman's Lake, Clarkston Cover Bridge, Stony Loakes, OHV Park, and Coleman County Ag Center.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of Z.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? Double A, propose Flatbella Ridge Subdivision, second addition, a minor subdivision containing three lots located on County Road 616, one mile east of the golf course road.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve A-A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? B-B, correct the right-of-way for County Road 363 and Sierra Ridge Estate subdivision to match as built conditions. The subdivision was approved by the Commission on April 10, 2007, and is located off of P Ridge Road on County Road 351.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak to that in just a second. This is indicated, this was approved back in '07, April of '07. And what's happened, the survey at that time was incorrect. They've got the road that's actually short over in some of the lots, or it's not. So they've done a resurvey of it, got all the leaks and bounds correct. And this will be shoved, this to correct up where the actual right-of-way is in that subdivision.
Make a motion to approve B-B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or passed? C-C, request the variance from subdivision regulations requiring direct access from a county maintained road. The owners of Flat Rock Cove are requested to be allowed to access from the existing privately maintained County Road 931.
Mr. Chairman, we've got a few questions unanswered on this, and we'd like to put this off for next month and come back with a recommendation at that time. So that's the Commission to table this next month.
Motion to table C-C. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or tabled? D-D, request from our county attorney for executive session under Section 7A7 of Act Number 2005-40.
Mr. Chairman, I directed a letter advising that executive session is necessary appropriate to confidential information. I review the matter on which the Commission is considering convening an executive session to discuss matters that in public would have a detrimental effect on the competitive position of a party to the negotiations or location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a public employee or business entity in the area. This matter is appropriate for executive session under Section 7A7. I respectfully recommend and request that a motion for executive session be considered at this time, and I estimate it will be approximately 30 minutes, and that we will reconvene around that time. If you wish to vote on executive session, please remember we have to take a roll call vote, and you can indicate your vote by yea or nay.
At this time, we have a request that a motion be considered for executive session based on the recommendations of our county attorney regarding pending or threatening legal matters and the commerce or trade matter.
I make a motion for executive session based on the recommendations for the county attorney regarding pending or threatening legal matters for commerce or trade matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Have one do the roll call. Chairman Clemmons.
Here. Hernane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hernane. He's the one.
He's the one, yeah.
I'll say, I'm a gentleman. I saw him now.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes, your turn.
Commissioner Marchman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duke.
Yeah.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yeah.
Any objections? Motion passed. We will be in executive session approximately 30 minutes, and then we will reconvene.
I would like to call this meeting to order again. At this time, we have heard information from our county attorney. We will not take any actions at this time and no formal actions was taken during the executive session. Eight, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, 4 p.m., in the commission meeting room. Nine, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, at 6 p.m., in the commission meeting room. Ten, can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.